Colleagues, panelists, if you could please turn on your video cameras. First, we're going to hear from Bob Seneme, Budget Director, on behalf of the Bureau of Budget and Management Research. This is first quarter projections for fiscal year 2022. After that, we will hear from representatives from Baltimore City Public School System. Again, first quarter projections for fiscal year 2022. Bob, if you could please take it away.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to members of the council. My name is Bob Seneme, Budget Director, representing the Department of Finance today. And what I'm going to share with you is our fiscal '22 first quarter projection. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. We have a presentation. Give me one moment here. And can folks let me know when they can see that?
We can see it.
It's good.
Okay, okay. So again, thank you for having me today. Goal today is to update the council on the fiscal '22 first quarter projection that we just completed. And just wanted to remind folks, the first quarter projection, this is what we expect to see for the entire year of fiscal '22, based on data through the first quarter. So we have data at this point for July, August, and September. And we're making some assumptions about what the city will spend and what we will receive in revenue throughout the rest of the year. And, you know, given it's the first quarter only, there's, you know, three quarters of the year is a projection still. So we'll talk about some of the uncertainty we still have in fiscal '22 as we get into the details. Before we share the specific numbers, I wanted to just give an update and set some context for federal aid of what is included here and not included in the projection. So first, just as a reminder, the city is relying on some federal aid through the CARES Act and FEMA reimbursement in the fiscal '22 budget. So with CARES, we got a direct award of $103.1 million. We spent about three quarters of that in fiscal '20 and '21. And there's about a quarter of that left that we're spending down in fiscal '22. And then for FEMA, a reminder that this is reimbursable fund. So we are incurring expenses as we go for certain programs, and we have to apply for reimbursement. We've already received $36.4 million of reimbursement, and there's much more to come, as I'll show you in a moment. In terms of the status for each of these in fiscal '22, so for CARES, the deadline was extended for CARES to the end of December in calendar 2021, which is the year we're in. So we have, you know, less than two months to spend down what we have from CARES. Our budget for fiscal '22 assumed that we would spend $24.5 million, which is that last chunk of spending in fiscal '22, and that's accounted for in the projection, which we'll show you in a moment. And then on the FEMA side, again, these funds are reimbursable. The past practice has been 25% federal reimbursement. If the city could put up a 25% share, there's an executive order that's in place there that allows for 100% reimbursement of eligible cost. And the guidance we've received from FEMA is that that 100% reimbursement is only through the end of December. Now, it is possible that that could be extended, but at this point, we're planning on that being over at the end of December. And again, on this side, we budgeted for a half-year worth of FEMA reimbursement because of that December deadline. Did the same on the CARES side. So both our revenue and expenditure estimates assume that we are going to spend $27.5 million of costs and things like food distribution, homeless sheltering, and vaccination, but that all those would be reimbursed, again, through just the first half of this year. Okay, so with that as the context, wanted to jump into our projection. So I should say, right off the bat, we have, I think, pretty good news to share at this point. And again, just to set the table, when we were building the fiscal '22 budget, really the question was, what will the recovery look like, if anything, from COVID? As I've shared many times, I think, with the council, you know, fiscal '21 was a really bad year. We were down on general fund revenues over $100 million. And as we build our fiscal '22 budget, with things like the Delta variant still hanging out there and some of the uncertainty about, you know, vaccine rollout, the question was, how quickly would the economy recover? And I think at this point, we're happy to report that the recovery seems to be going more quickly than what we had anticipated in the budget, based on the data through the first quarter. So for the overall projection, we're showing, we're projecting a $63.4 million revenue surplus versus the adopted budget. And we're projecting a $3.5 million expenditure deficit versus the expenditure budget. And for a net of $59.9 million surplus. And again, we'll go into more detail on both the revenue and expenditure side in a moment. On the revenue side first, so the total revenue projection is $2.071 billion. And this is more than the adopted budget by about 3%. So, you know, we like to set a target for ourselves of being within 2% in terms of revenue accuracy. We're outside that target at this point, and that is, you know, partially planned because we were being cautious and, you know, again, not wanting to get too ahead of ourselves with this recovery that at the time we planned the '22 budget was certainly not known for sure. Both of the projections, the revenue summary and the budget side, assume that $52 million in federal aid that I mentioned from CARES and FEMA. And so the good news is, even if we didn't have that aid at this point, if the revenue comes in as we expect, we would actually have just enough to cover our current year expenditures, which is, again, a good sign for our recovery. Also should mention here that the federal aid from the ARPA bill is not reflected here. So all of the awards that you've seen so far that have been announced for ARPA funds, those are not in the general fund. We're putting them in a separate fund because of the reporting, you know, requirements and everything we need to do to stay compliant with the ARPA law. So none of the spending that you've seen so far related to ARPA is included in this projection because that will be paid for out of ARPA. In terms of the large surpluses and deficits going from right to left, so the really good news here is the one on the far right is income taxes. So if you remember, at the end of fiscal '21, at the closeout hearing, we reported that we did very well in income tax in fiscal '21. And that was frankly a bit of a surprise for us. There were, you know, two factors that we had expected to create a negative impact. One was unemployment was just higher during the pandemic, I think, for obvious reasons. As, you know, certain businesses shut down, there were more people that were unemployed. Also, because of the bill that was passed at the state level, unemployment insurance payments, which are usually taxable for local governments, it was changed so that they were not taxable for a time period during the pandemic. And so we expected both of those to have an impact on our income taxes. And, you know, at the end of fiscal '21, there was a pleasant surprise for us and many other local jurisdictions in Maryland that we just did not see any impact from that. We believe that the reason for that is that those who were affected by the pandemic in terms of income were generally lower income, folks, that don't make up as much of a chunk of our income tax base. And so what our projection in fiscal '22 reflects is that that pleasant surprise for us at the end of '21 was not factored in to our '22 budget. So you're seeing basically that same effect in fiscal '22. And at this point, we're expecting a $29.2 million surplus versus the adopted budget for income tax. I should say, at this point, we don't get a distribution from the state on income tax until November. So again, we feel pretty good about this, but we'll know for sure, we'll know more in November. And then, of course, we'll tweak that forecast for our second quarter projection. The second item here, recreation and transfer taxes. Again, this was another area that's been really strong during the pandemic, which was, again, a pleasant surprise for many people. We build our budget for recreation and transfer taxes based on a five-year moving average of receipts. And the reason we do that is so that we don't get ahead of ourselves in relying on transfer and recreation tax for recurring expenses because the source is just so volatile. And so based on that budget methodology, we're generally in a time of growing transfer and recreation tax receipts like we're seeing now. Our budget is usually a little bit below even what we start the year expecting to bring in. And that's what we're seeing here, is that the market has remained strong. '21 was really an extraordinary year, the best in 15 years. And we haven't seen much of a slowdown in market activity. So we're projecting a $13.2 million surplus, again, versus that budget that is based on a five-year moving average and is intentionally conservative. We're projecting a $13.1 million surplus in all other local taxes. And really what that is, is prior year personal property tax. So, you know, due to COVID, there was a lateness in some businesses paying their personal property tax bills last year. And so what we're seeing is some of that prior year personal property tax payments are flowing into fiscal '22. That should be a one-time receipt, so we don't expect that that would be repeated going forward, but it will lead to some surplus in fiscal '22. On tax credits, we had projected the completion of a couple of very large projects that get the high-performance market rate tax credit, one that we had just discussed earlier. But what we found is that those projects have been pushed back. So whereas we were expecting to grant large credits for the first year of those projects, we think that will potentially be pushed back into '23 or beyond. And so, again, based on our assumptions, that's a surplus to us on having fewer or lower tax credit costs in fiscal '22. Camera violations. We had built into our budget a small change in driver behavior, a change, an improvement in change of behavior. And that was expectation because of schools opening. And, you know, generally, we've seen over time that the number of violations or number of tickets we issue does decline slightly from year over year, you know, again, as driver behavior changes and gets used to the cameras being in place. We have not seen that happen, so we're still kind of chugging along at the same rate we were last year. And so, again, here, we're showing a $6.9 million surplus versus our budget because we have not seen that decline, that small decline that we expected as we reopened. And the final one on the positive side is hotel tax. And so if you remember from last year, we talked a lot about, you know, visitor or tourist-related revenues, hotel, convention center, parking, admissions and amusement tax, and others. And, you know, we had built in some recovery in fiscal '22, so we expected these items to all improve. What we've seen so far, though, is that hotel especially has been running even a little bit above of what we had expected. And so just as an example, we had built our budget around an occupancy rate of about 51% for the entire year. And what we've seen even just through the first quarter is that we've already reached a 52% occupancy rate on our hotels. And, you know, at the worst time of COVID, we were seeing occupancy rates in the teens. And so the fact that we're at 52% already in the first quarter, I think, lends some hope that we're going to continue to see some improvement over the rest of the year. And based on that, we're projecting a $3 million surplus in hotel tax. On the downside, we have a $1.3 million deficit in stadium security charges. I want to clarify, this is just an accounting function. We actually shifted all of the costs, both the revenues and the expenditures for stadium security, into a special fund. So we're no longer going to account for this in the general fund going forward. We'll correct that in the fiscal '23 budget. There's a $1.4 million deficit in charges for central city services. This is a function of the general fund charges, the enterprise funds, an overhead rate, and it's based on the expected spend. And because the spending has been a little bit lower in the enterprise funds, that ends up being a deficit in the general fund. Sheriff District Court Services, these are the fines and fees that are paid at the district court. And again, as this reopening, they are starting to take cases, but the volume is still slow. So we are seeing fewer receipts on those fines and fees. And then finally, the largest deficit is in property taxes, real property taxes. So what was happening is that, you know, we are seeing appeals, especially on commercial property. So as I've mentioned a couple of times in these hearings, the overall impact of COVID on our property tax base, we think, has been net positive on the residential side. But we do expect, we did see declines in group three last year, which was the group in the southern part of the city that was reassessed. And we're expecting declines in commercial in group one for fiscal '23. What we're seeing here in fiscal '22 is that if there are properties that are reassessed off-cycle, and so properties that come due or sell before they're due for reassessment, those values are adjusted, and we are seeing an impact on lower assessments, especially on commercial properties, which, again, is not much of a surprise. But we're just seeing this through the first quarter in terms of properties that have sold and been reassessed right away. So that is the overall picture on revenue. Again, I should say that these figures are all versus the adopted budget. This is not all revenue sources. This is just the ones that had, you know, either large, by large, I mean, greater than $1 million expected surplus versus the budget, or greater than $1 million deficit versus the adopted budget. Next, wanted to move on to the expenditure detail. So just in sum, our projection is for spending of about $2 billion in fiscal '22. That's very close, only a small decrease versus our spending in fiscal '21. The spending is projected, again, at $3.5 million above what was budgeted. That represents a deficit of less than 1% of the overall budget. And as we'll show you, some of those deficits are COVID spending related. If you look at the spending by pillar, which we like to do, we publish all of our data by pillar. You can see in this chart that the deficits that we're reporting are really in the clean and healthy communities pillar, and the building public safety pillar. And again, those are largely COVID response costs, which we'll touch on in a moment. One thing that has come up in the expenditure review as well that we wanted to share is that we have a lot of vacant positions throughout many agencies in the city. And we're attributing some of that to just general difficulty in filling frontline positions during the pandemic. So we've talked a little bit about police, you know, struggles to recruit, health department and some others. So we do think that there is an impact of COVID, especially on frontline positions, being harder to attract people to those jobs. There's some routine attrition built in here, too. So we always see some routine attrition in any fiscal year, so we think that's part of it as well. But there's also, you know, a lot of news and a lot of the economic data that's coming out is showing that there's still this, you know, worker shortage, that workers are less willing to go back and take jobs without higher wages in some cases. And so that has hit a lot of industries. We think that is likely, at this point, you know, having an effect on our ability to hire as well. And another factor in the high level of vacancies is that we did, during COVID, during the worst times of COVID, because the financial situation was so bad, you know, we did have a hiring freeze in place for certain agencies. So, you know, we were purposely not hiring, you know, for example, temporary workers in wrecking parks because we didn't have, you know, pools or rec centers open. We weren't hiring, you know, librarians, for example, because we didn't have our libraries open, and we were okay with the existing staff. So as we move out of COVID and we have started to reopen, we're trying to hire for those positions. But there is, you know, an impact of not hiring for a long time. In some cases, we have just gotten behind in some of those positions that needed to be filled. So that's kind of the big theme that we've seen across expenditures as a whole. And, you know, that theme is true in all six of these agencies that I'm listing here. So these are the agencies where we're seeing the largest projected surpluses. And again, this is based on data through the first quarter and projecting what the expenses will be through the rest of the year. In each of these agencies, it's just very unlikely that they'll be able to fill all of the vacancies that they have. So, you know, wrecking parks, B sit, and police, transportation, free library, and state's attorney are the agencies where we've seen the largest projected surpluses. And again, a lot of that is related to personnel. I should say, one thing I wanted to mention here is that you might have seen the news recently. We did agree with the state's attorney to actually make a move and try to increase certain salaries for state's attorney office employees. And the way we funded that was we eliminated five of those attorney positions. And so we've been talking about this with other agencies, that if we are seeing pressure on salaries, we might want to bump up the salaries if we're willing to have, you know, fewer employees overall, but higher-paid employees. And so we are considering that with some of these other agencies as well. On the deficit side, there are five agencies right now that are projected to have a deficit if spending patterns continue for the rest of the year at the same pace. And a lot of this is COVID-related and due to the expiration of some of the federal aid at the end of December. So for the health department, we are projecting that spending will continue to house homeless individuals, even if we do not have the federal aid to continue from FEMA after December 31st. That's the reason there. On the fire department, the deficit reflects overtime savings, I'm sorry, overtime spending above budget and particularly in fire suppression. If you remember, we had abolished two fire companies in the fiscal '21 budget. Those two companies are still not funded in fiscal '22. This decision was made to not restore the funding until we had a chance to look at an operational assessment that the fire department is going through. We have gotten the results of that study. We're looking at the results of that study currently. All that is to say that we are still operating those two suppression companies without the funding in the fiscal '22. And so there's a $5.3 million deficit in fire due to that. General services is, again, the expiration of aid that we were using from CARES Act to help pay for the cleaning of city buildings is expected to continue beyond that December deadline. So there's a shortfall there. In public works, a $1.2 million deficit, which is about 1% of their budget. And again, here, because we've had a lot of staffing shortages, we've actually overspent a little bit on overtime to make up for those vacancies. So this is one agency where the overtime spending has been beyond what we have accounted for in terms of savings from those vacant positions. We also had a frontline stipend in place for a couple of our large agencies that continued into July and August. It was expected to end on June 30th of fiscal '21, but it was extended for two months into this fiscal year, which was not budgeted for. And then in finance, the accounts payable side of the department was asked to hire some additional workers to help reduce a backlog on outstanding accounts payable, outstanding invoices. And our projection assumes that those folks will stay on through the end of the year and continue to make sure that that backlog stays low. We've gotten the backlog down to only about $5 million of outstanding invoices as opposed to $20 million that was outstanding just in March of 2021. I should say here that for all of these agencies, you know, we don't sit on our hands and just kind of wait and kind of live with the idea of having a deficit. We are working with all these agencies and will work with them to figure out if we can try to get them on track by the end of the year. But again, if we assume current spending continues without some of the federal aid in the second half of the year, these are the agencies that would be at risk. There are two factors, too, that I wanted to mention. Still some uncertainty that could change the projection for one agency in particular and for all agencies and for the city overall. So in the police department, we are working with them right now to issue debt to replace helicopters in the police department. So the police helicopters that we have have come to the end of their useful life. We've actually been working with them, actually just met with them this morning, trying to figure out what we need to purchase now and how we will finance that and what the cost will look like. If the debt service payments for this, if we move quickly and the debt service starts in fiscal '22, that would eliminate the projected surplus in the police department. But again, you know, no decisions have been made there. We might be able to extend it into fiscal '23. And then more broadly, for all agencies, I want to just acknowledge that we have started this, you know, vaccination program and mandatory testing program. And we've only been in this for about three weeks. You know, employees had to report their vaccination status in October. We're only a couple of weeks into this. We know we are testing folks on a weekly basis. There could be some impact on employees and operations, but it's just too early to tell at this point. We know the cost of the testing program so far. We do believe we'll get, can apply for federal aid to help with that. But we are getting some feedback from agencies that as they've tried to coordinate and manage the testing, that there have been some hiccups, that there are some operational impacts, and there could be costs related to those, which we really won't know until we get through the full second quarter and see the data from that. So in summary, I think, again, you know, generally, good news here as of the first quarter. Our financial recovery is underway. Our financial status is improving. We're projecting an overall surplus of nearly $60 million in the general fund. And really, almost all that is driven by the revenue side of the budget. Again, income tax and transfer and recreation are still strong. And we are starting to see some evidence that those tourist-related revenues, especially hotel tax, are improving, you know, more rapidly than we had anticipated. Most of our agencies are operating with budget, but those that are not are largely doing things in response to COVID-19. And, you know, a lot of that is due to the expiration of federal aid, especially from the CARES Act. And we'll be working with those agencies to try to figure out, you know, what COVID response do we need in the second half of the year? And where can we bring those costs under control? And finally, I would just say, there's still, you know, a lot of uncertainty built into an early projection. You know, usual disclaimer that's even especially more true during COVID-19 is that there's still a possibility of a lot of things happening. You know, there could be, you know, a change in COVID-19. And we've already seen the impact of the Delta variant, for example. You know, the availability of federal aid is still uncertain. We don't know if the FEMA guidance will be extended yet. And again, the impact of the testing and vaccine mandates to our city operations, it's still early and hard to tell if there will be significant impacts there, at least from a cost standpoint. But again, pretty good news overall that we can share at this point, still early in the year. But again, happy to pause here and take questions from the committee on any of the information.
Bob, thanks so much. Can you take the presentation down?
Sure. Okay, should be down now.
Thank you. First, I want to commend you on the successful negotiations with the FOP. I've heard you talk a little bit about working to increase compensation for attorneys at the SAO's office. I know that the new FOP III contract does that as well for police officers. In that same light, I'm curious where our efforts are at with respect to CDL drivers, that impact a number of agencies. And before you answer that, I just want to say I completely support what you're doing with police and with the attorneys at the SAO's office and other places to, you know, increase the level of experience and quality of employee that we're hiring to do these very difficult jobs.
Right, so we have, we are, when we get into negotiations with each of our unions, we do, you know, look closely if there are any particular classes that are struggling to hire or if their salaries are out of line with what, you know, the market would expect. Our salaries are generally lower than some of our surrounding jurisdictions because, again, our tax base is lower. But to your point, we have discussed CDL drivers. That negotiation is still underway, though, so I can't, you know, share anything more with those fall under the ASME union. But I can tell you that some of the, you know, kind of difficult-to-hire positions have been looked at, and we're trying to figure out a way if we can kind of improve salaries or come up with a solution to improve the recruitment in those areas. But nothing has been decided yet on that front for the current round of negotiations, which is still open.
Let me ask a question a different way than understanding there's some sensitivity around what you can and can't share publicly. Is, are you all, the negotiating team, prioritizing this CDL issue during these contract negotiations?
So it is one of the topics that has been discussed.
And you need a little more, and then I'm willing to drop it. Is it a priority?
It's, I can say it's a priority.
Okay.
Remember, we did make a move on CDL drivers. We did actually increase the salaries, I think it was two years ago. So we're trying to see what has, you know, what has worked from those prior moves we made. I think it goes back to fiscal years, but we did bump up the salaries in the last round and just trying to figure out now what the impact of that has been and what we need to do to continue to make, you know, those positions competitive.
Okay, would it be possible for us to follow up offline, maybe sometime next week? Just to get a little more information, better understanding. Okay. Is...
Mr. Chair, I'd like to be included in that conversation. I've brought up this CDL issue year after year in the budget hearings. I'd like to be included in any conversation about it. I'd like to be included in any conversation about that, please.
I'm going to ask that you set up a meeting separately with with BBMR, but you're you're a member of the committee, so you're certainly welcome to to do that. I just have some other things that I want to that I want to discuss. It's a general topic for me, but yes, you're certainly. I'm going to take that meeting along, but you you, you know, please set something up with Bob, but Bob, I'll be in touch later in the week and. We can get some time in the books next week. Thank you. Second item, I'm very pleased to see that. You're looking at. Some capital spend for police specifically for the aviation unit. What is the, what is the total cost for the for four new helicopters?
So we we don't know yet. We're getting, we're getting quotes currently working with a vendor to get quotes. What they've, so I don't have an estimate in front of me, but we should have something within the next couple of weeks to get a sense of what the. Total cost would be. I mean, I can, I can tell you that. One thing that has come up in our conversations is, you know, last, last time we did this, which was many years ago. We did them all roughly at the same time. About are there ways to kind of better stagger potentially the purchases or or stagger the delivery so that we have. So that we don't run into a situation where we have a lot of them kind of reaching the end of their useful life at the same time. So we'll have more information on that within the next couple of weeks. And again, happy to happy to. You know, share that with the committee or with you if if you're interested in that when we get that information.
Certainly appreciate that. Two things I I would like to flag for you. One, the. The cameras that are used on the on the helicopters have, it's my understanding, at least. I want to say three of the four. Have exceeded their useful life. And the technology is pretty dated, right? Like two of the cameras, I think, are 10 or 12 years old. That's one piece. The second piece is, I would. I would strongly encourage you to consider an additional capital improvement there specifically. And this is going to sound crazy. So I preface with that. The floor in the hangar at Martin State Airport needs to be repainted. It's going to cost about $100,000 because there's some type of reflective paint that is used. It is demonstrated that that has a. Significant positive benefits in terms of maintenance and the life of the helicopter. In terms of how the maintenance workers work. I can't explain any more of it to you than that because I'm I'm not a helo technician. But I would strongly encourage you to talk with the folks in the aviation unit to at least get a better understanding of that. You know, I think, you know, we're looking at making a multi-million dollar investment there. This is a small addition to that, which would help protect that investment over the long term. So when we circle up on that, if you could just please be prepared to to follow up with me in terms of feasibility of of that investment.
Will do.
Our proposed investment. Thank you, Bob. I really appreciate it. Vice President Milton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess one section I just need some more conversation about. I know that you had mentioned that the health department has 11.7 million projected deficit. And. It was mentioned about some of that was due was driven by. Of course, COVID-19, the pandemic, which included housing home and the homeless individuals in hotels. So we have a, we have two separate offices. We have an office of homelessness and an office of family and children's success. Which basically runs the community action centers. So those are all separate offices. So how would they, how would they be driven by, you know, the health department's deficit?
Yeah, I I can explain that. We we made a decision early in the pandemic to charge. Like most COVID related stuff. To the health department, we set up a separate account code there. So, you know, homeless services obviously has is playing a role. In in the sheltering is kind of the lead on that. And MOCFS also is taking a role on a lead on some of the. The rental assistance programs, for example, but for the the cost of the sheltering. It's actually hitting the health department budget, and that was again, try to be consistent to look at all. Health related costs and have it in one spot in in the budget. So that's why it's showing up there, but it is related to the sheltering.
And.
Madam Vice President, if you could take over chairing for. Please and thank you and and back to you before.
Sure. And I guess the ARPA money that will be kind of helping with that big def deficit.
Right. So so yeah, let me, let me, let me actually clarify that for you. So there was an announcement, there will be some health spending. For COVID response that starts, it it starts, you know, right away as soon as possible. We had kind of mapped it out January 1st and beyond. We still, the the deficit we're showing in health there is for the sheltering costs, which we haven't made a decision yet on what. The funding source will be if we continue those. So what we're showing in the projection is that the general fund would pick up that that cost, even if FEMA. Aid expires at the end of December because FEMA has been paying for those costs. We have not made a decision on that program or where we would fund it, but to be conservative, we're assuming that we would continue to pick up that cost. In the general fund here through the end of the year. And so the health department cost that you're referring to for. COVID response is all the other work they're doing, the testing, the contact tracing, the vaccination. A lot of that work they're getting funded through ARPA, and that does not show up in this proposal. So. We're really at this point now where we're trying to shift costs out of the general fund and into ARPA for health response now that we have the ARPA funds available for it. But the sheltering cost is one that might continue to still be supported by FEMA. So we just don't know yet how that's going to shake out.
Okay, and then my second question. The public works funding and the nearly 100 vacant positions, that's. That's really an emergency kind of situation, and I. I guess at some point, don't you think the city really needs to start advertising? Because these are, I'm sure, positions that have benefits and are. Careers and probably mostly in sanitation, which is a dire need for our city. You know, this is like an emergency. This helps with the, you know, cleanliness that we're trying to get going in our community.
Right, yeah, we're definitely aware of this. You know, trying to be aggressive here. We've talked about some of the, you know, we've made some. Pay increases over the last couple of years to laborers and drivers, you know. With the impact of COVID, I think we're, you know, it's a struggle to get people to. Into these into these roles, but we are aware of it. We're looking at it and we have used, you know, I know. Folks might not be wild about this, but we we have, you know, had to use contracts for, you know, folks to help out with with solid waste collection if we can't fill the position. So. You know, our our commitment is making sure that we try to provide the service any way we can. And, you know, acknowledge that it has been a hardship here and and the struggles recruiting and. You know, we're doing the best we can within that within that area to to pick it up.
Okay, because I know there's companies out there that are really training. And to get these. People ready to apply for these jobs. So. I still think it's. It's a cheaper way to try to train and get people these city jobs than to. Contract out, and I think that that focus really needs to start, you know, we really need to start showing that focus. And I'll stop there and. Until our chair returns, I'm going to, do we have any? Any members that have any other questions? Chris, I know you were, did you have any questions, Chris, before? And I'll go back to Councilman Dorsey.
Sure, thank you, BB Middleton, Chair Milton stepping in. This question is for Mr. Sennemy. Earlier in the week, there was some media attention. Regarding the disbursement of rental assistance funds and the potential. For missing deadlines and having to return money to the federal government, which. Obviously would not be a good thing for folks. Potentially facing eviction. Can you speak to where the city stands as it relates to the disbursement of those funds and are there concerns that? The city will have to return support dollars if if deadlines aren't met?
Sure, so Councilman Burnett. I'm I'm aware of that issue. I'm not very close to it because, you know, MOCFS has been designated as the lead on that, so. I would have to defer to them or gather that information and how that will affect the city. I mean, we are aware, we've been helping them. Just from a technical standpoint, getting access to the funds. Many of the funds are coming through our our federal aid, you know, the year, they call it the ERA program. There was ERA 1 and 2 where we got. A couple of chunks of money from the federal government. So we've helped them kind of access the money and make sure the reporting is. Is ready to go, but in terms of the program itself, I'm I'm not very close to that admittedly, and. It it does not impact the general fund, so we've been, you know, deferring to MOCFS as the lead on that. And so happy to help coordinate if you want to get more information or or talk offline. About anything you need there.
Yeah, if you could assist.
We can connect you with the right.
Committee may be interested if there's something in writing that could be provided to us. I'm sure, I mean, obviously, all of us. Are likely receiving calls from constituents seeking support. For this. The second question I I had related to that, and it was just more me trying to get clarity on on this. I I've had one constituent reach out, but I'm certain that there are more. Who, and it's maybe for the agency directly, but you're here, so I forgot to ask. How, there was concerns about landlords. Who have not been responsive to requests for support for that program. And obviously, you wouldn't be able to answer how that may be, how many and how that may be impacting the that agency's ability to disperse the funds. But. The the policy of not providing direct support to tenants, was that something that was. Developed by finance or is that the. Mayor's Office of of Family Success internally that developed that policy? And they're asking because I had a constituent that's. Facing eviction right now and their landlord isn't responding, but I've talked to a few other council members who've had. Similar calls from people who need the support, want the support. We obviously need to get the dollars out. But in in the, you know, reading the federal regulations, there is. Guidance that allows the city to be able to disperse directly to tenants, and I've confirmed that. You know, through my own review of the the federal guidelines. I guess, could you speak to that? If not, I'm happy to just take it to that agency as well.
We we didn't have a role in developing the policy, so we've really been on the periphery of that one just because we have. You know, so much to manage with the CARES and the FEMA, which were the lead on and assisting with ARPA, so. I would have to defer to to Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success on that one and happy to try to connect you with the right right folks there.
Okay, yeah, I'll follow offline and keep talking. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll come back around.
Okay. Any other members that have a, Councilman Dorsey, did you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Bob, just coming back to this thing on CDL drivers. Because I know that the part of the issue is. Particularly with towing. Is that we're requiring a CDL. Only because part of the fleet is vehicles that require a CDL. Just to your knowledge, is is there any movement? Around changing that requirement that tow, that DOT towers have a CDL?
I'm not aware of any change, but I I'd have to, you know, gather that from from DOT to check with them.
I guess the the, I guess the way that might dovetail with finance is the need to create. New positions for towers that don't need to have a CDL or change it. I just think I don't even understand. What would need to happen there. But you don't know anything about that.
I I I am not aware of anything offhand, but we can, we can check with DOT. I know it has come up in conversation just to make sure. You know, we only require a CDL when when we have to, right? If that, because that. You know, license is 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 tough to acquire and, you know, there's a shortage there. So I know there's been conversations, but again, on how it. Impacts individual agencies or towers in specific, I don't know, so I'd have to get that from DOT.
I guess I just think about it because as a compensation issue, because I know that. We, when, when, you know, when you talk about us paying. Less than what other jurisdictions are doing or whatever, you know, private, certainly private sector jobs. In those fields, we just, we have this problem being able to hire. Towers at DOT because. In addition to us requiring that they have this CDL. License, we also require that they have towing skills, a completely separate skill set. That you don't have to have in general to be a CDL driver. And as a tow and tower, you don't in general have to have a CDL. And we're compensating below. What the market provides for either a tow or or a CDL driver and requiring them to have both of these skill sets. I I guess I need to follow DOT on that again. I had a question about how you are accounting for, because you talked about. Projected and actual revenues related to. Vehicle citations, I guess particularly ATBES citations. I'm wondering how you are, how you account for projections. Or actual revenues. With respect to the number of citations that will be issued versus the number that will be paid. I got a breakdown about three weeks ago, I think. From the Chief Data Officer of Outstanding Citations. Anybody that had, any vehicle that has three or more outstanding citations. I mean, the top of that list is. A vehicle that that probably at this point is breaking 300 unpaid citations. And there are, you know, a dozen others that have over 100 unpaid citations. And thousands with 10 to 20, you know, 10 to 10 to 100. We've got $19 million in unpaid citations at this moment. How do we account for that in our projections or do we actually expect to get any portion of that money?
Yeah, so we we do, we we get the data directly from. From from DOT on the number of of violations that are being issued by location, so we can see it by. By camera. We also do factor in a collection rate, so. I'm just looking at my notes from 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 when I was discussing this with our team and our our collection rate. Has declined. We were at 71% last year and this year we're projecting 65.9%. So we have seen the collection rate drop off a little bit. There are no, there are no. Penalties that get tacked on to these citations. So that's something that's kind of we're limited to in state law, that it's your fine and your fine and that's it. So there's. There's not a huge, there's not a. A a great incentive to get people to pay, but we do factor in the fact that there will be some uncollected rate there. For for both of those programs. So we look at the data, we look at it by camera, by, you know, by location. We get a report from them monthly and then we build in some some expectation of collection rates. And if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, and and. If Pedro's on, he can clarify this. I believe that. I believe they're used to that the state changed the rule and that they do not require payment to renew your registration, which is how to impact on collection rates. I can't remember. Exactly how that works, but if he he's on, he might be able to comment.
Yeah, I'd like to know about that. That would certainly.
Yeah, I think he had to drop off, so I can, I can check with him. I do believe that some of the drop off in collection rate. Is because, oh, he's in the, or just said he's in the attendee, so.
Thanks, I was, yeah, often I I came back, so I wasn't in the panel. So yes, there was a change in legislation, in the state law. I believe a year or so ago. If it wasn't the 2021 General Assembly was before where. Camera violations. Used to be, hey, I mean, people couldn't renew their registration if they have outstanding camera citations. But that provision of the law was eliminated. Technically. So technically, there is no requirement for people to pay these type of violations, and they can continue renewing their registration. So there is an effort that the, the Mayor's Office is trying to move forward in and put that requirement back into the law. So that's the only mechanism that we have to actually recover those violations that have been unpaid.
And you're talking about the driver's license or the vehicle registration?
Sorry, the vehicle registration, yes.
Interesting, if you look at the bulk of the people who are really, the vehicles that have significant numbers of outstanding violations, the bulk of them aren't registered anyway. You know, they're vehicles that the registration expired in 2020, 2019, 2018. You know, vehicle that, that there's drivers cruising around these vehicles with impunity because we actually have no tools whatsoever to do anything about this. Because we can't even impound the vehicles if it's just these ATVS tickets. You can have 290, 300, you can have 1,000 ATVES tickets. You could be driving around the city like a raving madman. And if you don't have at least three outstanding parking tickets, then we can't even boot and tow your vehicle. So I, I guess I wonder what our revenue projections would look like if we could get some of these absolutely insane drivers off the street. And I mean, they're, they're certainly driving the, the number of tickets up with absolute impunity. So this drop in the revenue, I mean, the collection rate is, I guess, interesting to me. I guess let's talk more about that later. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Sure, thank you, Pedro.
Thank you. Any other members have any questions before we move to other questioning, other people questioning? Hearing none. Councilwoman Ramos, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, and thanks for this great briefing. I had a couple of questions, sort of following up from what Madam Chair was asking about and some of my other colleagues. This, I'm really glad to see that the Finance and BBMR is actually working agency by agency to figure out, you know, do we raise the salaries and the qualifications or, or not in certain areas? But I wonder if we shouldn't start making some decisions city employee why? Because I think that, or what I was hearing after the announcement of the agreement with the FOP, morale went really down because we're not really, you know, considering our $13 an hour garbage persons. And we're not considering, you know, some of the people who have been working ridiculous hours and not getting that compensation. Sure, they're, they're allowed overtime, but then that, that, that doesn't actually solve the problem in terms of being able to recruit people and also to retain people. So I wondered if we're looking much more broadly at the salary structure, period, related to this issue of, you know, workers wanting higher wages and demanding that. And that's why we're not able to hire as much as we need to.
Yeah, I, I would, I would just say, Councilwoman, in response to that, we, we, we do look at these things across, across agencies. And for, you know, the, for the police one in particular, I, I was, I was part of that team that was working on that. And I think what, what we try to stress with agencies is that, you know, you can't just ask for pay increases because we can't afford it, right? Like, we have a budget and we can't just bump up salaries unless we choose something else that goes away. What police did, and I think it's a good model for, for other agencies, and, and, and we're working on this with other agencies, is they, you know, as part of that group, they came to us and said, here are some operational savings that we're willing to, you know, count on in order to kind of redirect some of those savings, some of those savings into targeted pay increases for members of the bargaining unit where we felt we could make a, you know, a, a, a significant improvement, especially in that particular instance on police at the early end of, of this, of the pay scale in the first couple of years. So we encourage agencies to do that, really where we, we've gotten hung up. And, and we had the same discussion with State's Attorney, they came and said, we want to bump up everybody's salaries. And we said, well, are you willing to give up, you know, some positions for it? And they, ultimately, we got them to agree to say, yeah, we'll get rid of five, permanently, you know, abolish five, I think it was five positions, and with those being out of the budget, we can redirect those savings into, you know, into higher salaries. So our, our viewpoint is that I'd rather have fewer but higher paid employees, frankly. But the fewer is the key, right? Like, if an agency comes to us and says, if we pay these folks higher, but we can count on some savings where we're better managing the workforce, you know, we would always be willing to kind of build those in and kind of work with an agency to get that done. And it, it's a challenge admittedly in different agencies and there are different issues in, 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 in different agencies. But, you know, the police example is a good one, where they, you know, sat down actually with, you know, with, with their staff and figured out ways that they could redirect some, some costs that they had that could go into those higher salaries. And so we'll do that with DPW and we'll do that with other agencies. I, you know, I've had a conversation with the new DPW director about this, I mean, we've talked about it. He's, he's, you know, brand new, but he's, has a lot of experience in solid waste. So I do think there's opportunities where we could be more efficient in some places and, and use that as, as a source. But just blanket across the board pay, you know, we have to have a funding source for it, we have to be able to afford it. And with what we're facing in fiscal '23, you know, with the first wave of, of educational spending, we're still, you know, even though things look better in '22, we still have a hole to dig out of for '23 because that will be the first year of, of new required spending on education.
So thanks for that explanation about how that worked with the police. I just, again, want to put in a plug, we, we do have frontline workers. And in some cases, we can't actually have fewer, like in our, our garbage collectors and recycling collectors. But we absolutely need them. They were essential and continue to be essential. And, and raising that salary is going to be extremely important. So however, we need to work with you to, to make that happen for them and our other frontline workers who we can't actually have fewer of, we, we definitely need to, to start having that conversation. So I, I appreciate that. My second question is, I don't know if this is appropriate now, but in thinking ahead of the, for the 2023 budget, I'm think, you know, obviously, you're, you just stated, you're thinking about our first payment that we have to make in terms of Kerwin and that kind of thing. I'm also interested in sort of structure related to the pillars and related to sort of rethinking how all of our metrics are going to be. Are the departments starting to work on that already?
We, we are, so the, we gave, we kicked off the process this year for agencies. It was a couple of weeks ago where we gave instructions for, for budget proposals. And, you know, I, I can share at this point that what we have decided to do, you know, with the mayor's agreement is go back to what we would call kind of the outcome-based budgeting process where we, you know, and, and I think folks know we're working on this, you know, strategic plan for the city where we're trying to highlight, you know, what are the goals we're trying to achieve? What are the actions under each of those goals that we can take to improve performance for our agencies and for our, our residents? And so our process is going to be a little bit, is going to be more strategic this year. I think I've probably shared with you, Councilwoman and others, that, you know, it's really hard to get a good strategic process going with the transition we had in the, in the mayor's office, unfortunately. You know, we had, you know, one mayor who was here and then left office. We had another one who was here in a transition before an election. So now that we have at least some, you know, some kind of consistency there, we have been working with the mayor and his team to say, hey, how do we want a budget? And how do we want to really align our process around, you know, these goal, these pillars and these goals that we're trying to achieve? So I think we're going to make a big improvement this year, I think it's going to be much better. It, it's a very time-intensive process for a lot of people. So we haven't done it for, I guess, four years. The last time we did it was in fiscal 2017. But we have, you know, asked agencies to make proposals back to us. We are going to try to convene broader teams, we call them results teams, to analyze each of the proposals and really score them and say which one, you know, which, which proposals within each pillar is most likely to advance the pillar goals and to get us better performance and which ones are not really impactful? And try to make decisions based on those, those, those rankings. So I think there will be progress to, to, to report this year in, in our process for sure. But yeah, we are trying to get back to that more strategic, like looking by pillar, what, you know, what services and what, you know, really what advances each of those goals. On terms of the performance metrics, you, yeah, I mean, you're asking about performance metrics in particular. On that side, so we have, you know, in our agency, in our budget book, we have, over many years, collected and, and worked with agencies to have service level measures for, for each of the services that we publish in the budget. As we've been doing this kind of strategic planning with the, with the mayor's office, you know, we're trying to figure out what are those higher level goals that we're trying to achieve? What are those outcomes? What are those measures we want to be looking at? So there's still some work that's being done on that, on that side of things. It's not final yet, but really, the, the trick in my mind is like kind of linking those service level goals at the agency level and say, if you're doing this well at your level, does it really help to drive one of these broader citywide, you know, outcomes? And that's kind of the trick of, of putting things together. So we're still working through that, we don't have anything yet to share on that front. But again, we're, we're trying to link the budget process more strategically to, to how do we advance each of those pillars? And we, and, you know, we have some, some progress on that action plan that we're, we'll be reporting soon.
Thanks, I, I appreciate it. I'm, you know, concerned about one particular pillar because I don't think the programs that are there now actually speak to the pillar goals. So, and I, we've talked about that before. So i- if there's any way to, to work on that particular piece with you, that would be great. And I realize that we have, this is sort of a follow-up, Madam Chair, if this is okay, Mr. Chair. I realized that the, because you mentioned the strategic plan, I know that it was going to happen. I wasn't sure, what's the public input on that? Well, how are we involved in that? Because I don't, unless I missed it, I, which is possible. I haven't heard much about what's the public input on this. And I realize that planning is about to do a comp plan for the city. But I, you know, the two have to come together and we have to have, you know, what, what's the public input on this?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what the input has been, but we, we can connect you with the, with the, with the group that's doing that. So it's really being led out of the Office of Performance and Innovation. So I can connect you with the right folks who've been leading it, just to kind of share with you what that, what that looks like. And it's your earlier question about what services are under each pillar. We, we, we will be making some changes to that this year. So to kind of, to try to better align that. So I'd be happy to share with you kind of an example of what it looks like, just to get your, you know, your feedback and your eyes on it. Because I know you, I, I think you're referring probably to the equitable neighborhood development pillar is the one you have interest in. So again, now that we have these pillars more, you know, firmly defined and, and understanding what we're trying to achieve, it's a little bit easier to match up services with each of those pillars. And, you know, equitable neighborhood development, there's a lot of stuff that can fall under that, like pure economic development, it has to fall there, I think, because it doesn't really go anywhere else. So even within that equitable, you know, development, you can talk about just pure economic development. You can talk about social services and, and support, you can talk about housing development, affordable housing. There's, there's almost a bunch of little, little sub-pillars within each of those pillars, frankly, that we, we define. So I'm happy to share that with you, so you see how we, how we think about it and what it will look like in, in the fiscal '23 budget proposal.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And I think the whole committee would be interested in the strategic plan, planning piece, Mr. Chair. That might be a request from the committee.
I, I think that's a good idea to, for Bob, if you could, at, at least in our next brief, briefing, I think it would be good to invite the Office of Innovation. As you kind of said, they took the lead in trying to engage the public and figuring out ways to engage and keep the council informed as we move along as well. There should be some new ways to include the public, because that's just been something that the public has been requesting over and over again to be involved. And since our mayor has these five pillars, there's definitely a way you can involve the public in a, in a new innovative way as they have been doing in other cities. So I see that our chair is back, thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Are there any other council members that have any questions on another round? Councilman Burnett, I didn't know if you were finished.
I, I'm good.
Okay, okay. Councilman Dorsey, are, are you finished with your questioning?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. I can hand it back over to you, Chair Costello.
Thank you, Madam VP. Is everyone else on the committee good? Okay, Bob, we are good, if we could bring up city schools, please?